And that's done through the, I'm sorry, it's done through the legislative process.
Yeah, and you thought something like the director of finance would be funding?
Um, well, I, I think he should certainly be participating, but, um, it probably comes from the government. So, I think, uh, I think.
Public works. You know, everything that I just made it up. We can discuss in terms of because when they come like this, you really don't know um what it's for. And all of these transfers, we never had transfers, which might be the beginning of the year. We usually transfer funds at the end of the year to make sure that um you know it's probably where they want to get started. But all of this um it's uh it's very it's just so we do get our days right all day. But I am, I think that when they do come like this, we do need to make sure, but we need to consider this. You know what I'm saying? You know, when they're all like this and you know we're not gonna say no and uh transfer money to make sure we pay the debt. But um I would be interested in just from one cell suite and then blow it. So we have to just be aware that we need to try to use the consent agreement, otherwise we do have. Yeah, I might be wrong, I guess. So I'll see you down.
So that's the thing you have to do, is transfer money. You have to look down and as we're doing one, just want to discuss because we should be open to our council meetings. And we're gonna talk about it more. Can we move forward to the stuff now or is it? Do I have any commission to make to the stuff now or is it? I'm not the most able to meet. I second. I just don't hear because it wasn't me, I just don't know how to move on. Stuff another agenda, uh number five. We have first reading of twenty twenty-five, there's R, there's twenty-nine. The sale of Cordenville State and also with twenty twenty-five, R thirty, uh the sale of Cordenville State. Mr. Smith. Do you want to take the mic over to you?
We have um two pieces of property that have been uh sold to means that I have difficult times announcing. Uh but um they have been patiently waiting, uh I think they've been waiting almost two months to uh this to occur. So um they are anxious to get started. Uh this is for ten fifty-five Chicago, this particular uh resolution. And uh they wanna start building uh a construction project after the approval.
So wanting to build a house and the and the what is the next legislative issue?
That's also.
Who knows when we get there?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions about the the two houses that we're going to get from them? Because thirty doesn't have a lot.
That's because this doesn't have. There's a parcel number, but it's not that.
Because if somebody doesn't know how to do a one thousand two hundred. And my dreams is two.
Two properties.
Two properties, but it's okay, that's only it's not gonna be combined, not gonna be consolidated.
Uh I don't think they're adjacent to each other by the call.
Who has?
Um I would have to go back and check. Um as to whether um it's a consolidation or whether it's two separate properties. But I don't, I don't remember them being adjacent to one another.
So one is um okay, this is one of the things too.
Those are on the parcel number and it would, it would appear that they're not adjacent to each other. I could, I could certainly look for the, let go of the against the back and check pages.
At least we even know, I'd be in the mountains. Okay, uh so that's it, so those two pieces of property? Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. We're down to the last.
So um I think there is a property titled in thirty two. Uh it's not titled in name of one. There's one that requires five million to support the uh. Which one? Twenty-nine and four.
Okay, moving on to uh resolutions, twenty twenty-five, R thirty-one. Has to do with the policy, it can hold hearings or meetings. That means a video, content, or any other familiar uh similar electronic technology. Like that. Now, if we're deciding we want to expand it. Well, this is um two of the two.
Fire question is two parts of the. Uh so now there's that two fifty-five on the scanner. Uh not adequate for that uh uh one oh five. Um so that's R thirty-one, R thirty-one, uh again, there's something to do with the living act. Um the general assembly test bill that defines their law, uh the only two steps. Allowing public bodies to meet virtually. Um there are a lot of limitations on it, um and they're all contained in the policy that's written on that legislation. So um public bodies can meet virtually, but first and foremost, they must have a policy adopted that is in compliance with the statute. So that's the purpose of this legislation, R thirty-one, is put forward as policies for having virtual meetings that implies uh your uh statute allowing. Um a couple of the limitations, and the clerk had sent out an expert email a couple of weeks ago, some things that are serious to me, if I look through it. Um it highlights um things that you cannot do in a virtual meeting. So you cannot make the major hiring decisions in a virtual meeting. Um. For the expenditure in a virtual meeting. You cannot vote, prepare, and discuss any levers in a virtual meeting. Um because uh councilmen is a very publicly elected official and because they are compensated, although not much, but are compensated for his positions. You cannot attend a virtual meeting just by yourself. You can only participate in a multi-party virtual meeting. In other words, only a councilor's paid to receive is having a virtual meeting. So um this policy is basically um a supplement uh to meetings. Virtual meetings, it does have all of the elements that are on it as far as the policy, that's a uh that's the legislature.
So what can you add to me?
Um uh you know, you can sell a real estate, but pretty much everything is on the uh calendar tonight except for the discussion of levies, which is important. So it it was not, you know, something that can be used. Uh discussion about permitting appropriations or even the temporary appropriations. Uh when the council is concerned about hiring the various managers, uh so this is just not something that can be done by a third party. Council if you decide to award a one point two million dollar contract to a V that's for straight into it, that's not. So it is very limited, but um it does allow for a number of things to be done. And depending on climate weather, not to bid another pandemic, uh but the things without the issue, if you use this to have a well.
Okay, any other questions? Can you listen to my interest? Listen to my interest now, motion for granted. Two seconds. Okay. The move in seconds during the meeting, all the group members say uh uh eight oh two. If we will start. Eight oh three, we will start the uh council meeting. There should be center three, if there's on the other side, there's here center two. The numbers are off. So there should be centers, mass centers, there's last few center two, but you don't let it go straight down, they should all be same ones. So it's not that. Did you get your answer, Mr. Smith? Let's think that we must get started, it is uh pass those uh five minutes. We have a long agenda tonight and maybe a vegetable chance. I am ready when you are, Vice Mayor, starting with you.
Lincoln Heights, uh council meeting, Monday, April the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, officially called to order at eight oh eight P M. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hinkston. Councilwoman Tanya Key. No response. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Present.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter.
Present.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree. No response. As I stated in the committee of the whole meeting, the mayor did send an email stating that he will not be in attendance and is requesting excusal due to job um requirements. We have five who are present, two who are absent, we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We have a special guest tonight uh with the invitation from our councilwoman Laverne Mitchell, who will introduce that person.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So Reverend McVity, if you would come up, please. Reverend McVity um came by Saint Simon's Episcopal Church one day, he called first. Um and said he wanted to talk to someone about uh what was happening in the village um as a result of a hate incident. And so Mr. Mc, uh sorry, Reverend McVity, if you explain um what moved you, how you came through the village. Um and um he was concerned and so he wanted to do something. And I asked him, well, you can come and pray for us, but just tell them a little bit about yourself.
And please spell your name.
Thank you.
And you need all the information to give to her.
Yes. My first name is Bruce, B R U C E, last name is McVity, capital M C, capital V Victor, E T Y.
T U Y.
T, it's M C V Victor, E T Y.
Oh, T Y. Thank you.
I'm a member at Wyoming Baptist Church, a retired minister. I'm still actively engaged in ministry. And uh I became aware of the February seventh incident. And in February ninth, members from our church came over to participate in the vigil and in support of your community. And we participated in the march which occurred at that time, too. Afterwards, I was deeply concerned with what I saw was happening here, it was my, I've only lived here for four years in Cincinnati. Um I moved here after retirement. And uh Ms. Mitchell agreed to speak with me, and I didn't know who she was at the time, just the warden of the church there. So I have uh over twenty years' experience as a law enforcement officer in the state of Michigan and state of Illinois. I served in uh Flint Police Department in Flint, Michigan, my beginning career back in the nineteen seventies and early nineteen eighties. And I was concerned by what I was hearing and seeing and wanting to know more about what was happening. And as I, as I was interacting with Ms. Mitchell, I wanted just to share a little background of what uh of what, because I do have the perspective of being on both sides of the issue. I've been through um riots inside of the city of Flint, too, while I was there in uniform, police. I wanted to share with you that the vast majority of police officers want to serve their communities, they really do. They want to keep their neighbors safe, and they want to go home to their families at the end of the shifts. They are good people, doing an often thankless task, I know. They need our support, but that does not mean that officers who break the law and or violate their community's trust should not, should be protected and excused from their behavior, they should not. They should be held accountable. What I find inside of our culture at this time, and it's even more so than when I was engaged. There's two seemingly opposing positions that raise their voices in our country lately. Each promises to create a wonderful society for us and solve all of our social and racial issues. With the sweep of their hand, they would put it almost to you. One promises an end to all of our problems with quickly enacted laws and social and educational programs. But we know that not all programs are solved by education, they're not. The other promise is to return us to the golden years of safety and security and prosperity by diminishing some of our personal liberties and expanding funding for new law enforcement programs. I think from both perspectives, some of these steps are necessary, they are. But somehow, each approach in and of itself sounds hollow and empty to me. I think it's often an attempt to lull us into a quick fix when what is needed is a deep commitment, a deep committed effort to acknowledge the past, to understand each other, and to work together to address the problems, the roots of the problems rather than the symptoms which we see. I've reflected often upon this. And a thought keeps running through my mind, and has for the last five years. How can we magically make great again what was never great for so many people in our country? How can we do that? I wonder if we will accept the rhetoric of quick fixes that satisfy our self-denial about the extent and the depth of the problems we are facing in our state and in our country as a whole, and in our communities. And within each one of us, actually. Or will we listen to the voices of our children and our neighbors who are marching in the streets? Black and brown lives, yes. All lives matter. It is a human right. Ms. Mitchell asked me if I would just lead you in prayer for a moment here as you begin your meeting. Our God, by whom the meek are guided in judgment, and light rises up in darkness for the godly. Grant us in our doubts and uncertainties the grace to ask what you would have us to do, that the Spirit of wisdom may save us from all false choices, and that in your light we may see light, and in your straight path may not stumble. God, I would ask for your wisdom and your discernment upon these leaders of Lincoln Heights. May you hedge around this community and protect it from the forces of evil outside which come in. May they have the courage to stand strong before the right, sometimes against numbers that are overwhelming, and often when they feel they are standing alone. I know, Father, that these leaders are no strangers to the struggle that we are in. Through Jesus Christ our Lord, I ask this blessing of our Father upon you and your work in this community. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend McVity.
Thank you for your time and your grace.
Thank you. All right.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to make a motion to excuse Mayor, uh, Ruby Kinsey Mumfree from tonight's, uh, code of, uh, Committee of the Whole and Council Meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved in second, moved by Linda and seconded by Phyllis. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Are there any questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any more ayes? Aye, you got aye up here?
Yeah.
Aye, oh, yeah. Okay, motion passed. Anyone opposed? They all said aye, that's what I didn't ask. Okay, but to put it on record, yes. Uh, founder of the journal, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of March the seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and regular council meeting minutes of March the seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, with any necessary corrections. I need a motion, please. Uh, would you all say it loud enough so that the mic, they'll pick it up? Thank you. I, I did hear you, Phyllis, but when you're talking, speaking to the mic, because she's got to type it up. Who was second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and, uh, moved by Councilwoman Phyllis Baber and seconded by Councilwoman Karen Hinkston. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Been no questions, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any one abstain? Any ayes? Motion passed. Announcements. Councilwoman Hinkston, do you have any?
No.
Councilwoman, uh, Mumia. Nona Calhoun Mumia, I guess I'll get that right before the end of the year.
No.
No, okay. Uh, Councilwoman Baber?
Uh, no announcements, thank you.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
No, ma'am.
Yes.
I think we have some meetings coming up, this come next Monday, right?
Speak to the meeting.
The, and the, um, council members should tell them we have the meeting and the time. Their meeting's third week.
Oh, okay, so you have regular, uh, committee meetings. Uh, committee?
Yes.
Committee, this will be the, uh, first Monday, no, be the third.
Third Monday.
Third Monday.
Mm-hmm.
So we have, uh, finance.
Yes.
And, uh, fully says, safety and law. Safety and law will be at five thirty P M. on Monday coming, this Monday coming up, one week from today, right here. And then, uh, following that at six thirty will be the finance committee meeting. Thank you. Didn't think about them. Okay. Uh, please come back for those meetings and find out what we're doing, uh, and what we're doing in there. Okay. All right, any other? We're working on a Day of Love, I can announce that. Mr. Williams has been invited to, uh, come and participate this year, so he will have information that's needed for us to have that, uh, grand event here. If you didn't come last year, it's free to the public. It's been sponsored by, uh, Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church with collaboration with the Village of Lincoln Heights, and be fun for, fun for both adults and kids, every, of all ages. Uh, so, since the planning process and the money comes from the church and those that want to come alongside and help sponsor that. Okay, we are there to collaborate. So, our first meeting is tomorrow, and, uh, it's at two P M. at Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church. And no, I did tell you that, uh, they are using folks from the church, but this year they've extended it to Mr. Williams. Uh, they love you. Okay? On the announcement that I, Easter! No. Couple more things, Easter, what's happening Sunday is Easter and, uh,
Saint Monica's.
At what time is the Easter egg hunt?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock, is the hunt or the giving away baskets, which one?
I guess they probably have a hunt, it's giveaway.
Okay, a hunt and giveaway, so if you have children or grandchildren, nieces, nephew, whoever, uh, be sure they go up to Saint Monica's and get the Easter egg, uh, hunt on and the Easter eggs. Uh, remember that, uh, stuff costs now, it's quite expensive, so if you can go get you some free eggs and stuff, just make your way up there. Also, Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church will be giving away, uh, baskets at the end of church on Sunday. There are two services, one at eight in the morning and ten is the next one. So, if you two want to go get some chocolate and eggs and whatever else they put in those baskets, be sure to, uh, stop by. My announcements. Thank you. Okay, moving along from announcements, Ms. Mitchell, uh, Councilwoman Mitchell, you want to come and sit down for a minute? Okay, uh, communications from, with, to the regular agenda and communications from the clerk.
Don't have anything at this time, Vice Mayor.
Okay, and Mayor, uh, Mumfree is not here, Kinsey Mumfree is not here, so we move on to the interim village manager, uh, Mr. Chris Williams.
Good evening, everybody. Um, we met with Hamilton County Sheriff's. They did, they came out and did, uh, the first step of the, uh, risk assessment on this building. So, uh, they had, uh, about twenty to thirty questions that they asked about the safety of this building. So, they looking to come back in a week or two, they gonna do a walk-through through our facilities and make recommendations, uh, what we need to approve also employees, uh, and council could feel safer while they're in the building. The tax department is working on taxes. If you need to come in to pay your taxes, she could assist you with that. Uh, she could help you along with Rita, um, paying your taxes along Rita. She's going, I believe she's working an extra hour over the six P M. uh, this week. So, um, if you need help with paying your taxes online, uh, Ms. Dee Peterson, uh, can help you with that. Uh, we met also with the Hamilton County Sheriff's. They're going to start enforcing, uh, parking violation, parking on the wrong side of the street, parking on the sidewalks, uh, abandoning cars on the street, so we want to be mindful, uh, they want us to get out with all the information, they gonna start with warnings. So, we'll make sure we park on the right side of the street, um, make sure your car is operable and moving. Um, they gonna start at the beginning of May, uh, giving out warnings with that. Uh, the Public Works Department, uh, so far, we used about sixteen tons of asphalt repairing, uh, holes in the street, potholes in the street, crack, filling cracks and stuff like that. If you see any cracks or anything out there, please, uh, send me an email or call the village, and if we missed anything, we could come out there. I think we got like two more streets left to do. We also, uh, working on Serenity Park, pulling weeds and doing other things, trying to get the park in good shape for this upcoming spring and summer. Uh, the chipper program. Next week will be our first run on the chipper program. So, if you have him, if you have brush or limbs or sticks or anything like that that need to be disposed of, um, just lay them by the sidewalk, and we'll come out there and get them and get them taken care of.
Okay. I want to report all of Adams Street, all of it. You said pothole, didn't you?
Yes.
All, all Adams.
Adams Street is scheduled to be repaved, Adams and Jackson.
Thank you.
And, um, Kerry and McGee is scheduled to be repaved, um, coming up this year. And also, we got Simmons Street project, uh, is coming up to, that project is gonna start July seventh. They gonna start by replacing the gas line and the water line, uh, first, and then they gonna start with, uh, the concrete repair, uh, replacing some aprons and some curbs that need to be replaced. It's not gonna be a full, uh, redo like Chamberlain, but it's gonna be, uh, repaired for, you know, what they see needs to be repaired. Um, we had that meeting this week, so it's scheduled to start July seventh.
Okay, is that your report?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a written copy for council? Make sure that you, uh, uh, send that to, uh, Ms. Randolph, and she can email your report to all of us, so we'll have it.
I have a question there.
Yes, question.
So what's being done on Serenity Park, was the repair?
That's the water line for the water fountain. Um, the water fountain, uh, the water fountain that we put in last year, we went, it had, uh, it got installed, it was a mix-up in the language in the contract, so it didn't have water going to it. So, we finally got the contract to come back out. Uh, the problem was the tap service. Uh, it needed a tap, we thought we was getting the tap, and we didn't, uh. So, this is the final stage of that. They come, they came out, we found another tap, so it wouldn't cost us that much money, uh, to have Cincinnati Water Works to come out and dig up the street and run the tap all the way to the new water fountain.
So, Mr. Williams, uh, will you make sure that whatever we're doing, in order for the public to know, we need to put it on the website?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they can look and see we are actually doing something. Any other questions for Mr. Williams? To the clerk or council, would you, uh, pull out the mayor's report? She did, it's in here, so we might as well do that. Can you read her report?
Okay. Lincoln Heights Mayor's Court Report Monthly Report for March twenty twenty-five. Total to state was ten dollars. Total area fines to external agencies, zero dollars. Total to other entities, including restitution, zero dollars. Total bonds forfeited to village, zero dollars. Total to village, including miscellaneous receipts, adjustments, and B A. fee, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. So the total to be dispersed for March twenty twenty-five was four hundred and thirty-two dollars and no cents.
Thank you. I need two motions, uh, one to accept the mayor's report and one to accept the interim village manager's report. So let's, uh, do the.
Madam Chair, which one are you doing first, so I can?
We're gonna do the one that you just talked about, so they'd be right there together.
Okay.
Is there a motion to receive the, uh, mayor's report?
I'm motion to receive it.
I'm sorry, who was? Okay.
Karen Hinkston, uh, Councilwoman Karen Hinkston, uh, motion to accept the report, is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by, uh, Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Are there any questions? Any questions? None? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any abstentions? Any ayes, noes? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving along to the interim village manager's report, I need a motion to accept his report.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second. Are there any questions about his report? Are there any questions? No questions? All in favor, please say aye. Any more abstain? No one? Motion passed. No. Did I do all eight ayes, yeah? Okay, let's move along to old business. Ooh, discussion of levies. We talked about this in, uh, Committee of the Whole, do we need to talk about it in the council meeting?
Vice Mayor, could I make one comment?
Yes.
So, I emailed everybody, uh, this evening after the Council of the Whole meeting, um, an email I had drafted back in March on this. It's got attached to it, the July twenty-second agenda at which the last vote on the resolutions for the levy took place. It also has attached to it, um, R sixty-seven, R sixty-eight, and R sixty-nine, uh, which are the, um, revy, levy resolutions. Um, so, at least based on what I had in my document management system, uh, those were the ones that I had last found. So, if everyone, um, can, please take a look at it, uh, that should provide a good jumping off point from where things were left last year.
And the three levies are?
The police, the operating, uh, it's the police and the operating. The reason there are three pieces is, um, we are doing the operating, it looks like, in two different pieces. One was to renew it, and one was to increase it.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, so we'll bring this back to the next, uh, council meeting that we have and take action on it then. For new business. I'm sorry. You have second reading of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash nineteen. Ms. Lisa, you want to, that's the second reading, so. R nineteen.
So we first need the motion made by someone who voted with the prevailing group to lay it on the table, to motion to bring it back before council.
Okay, what are we doing?
We need to bring it back off the table. You, I think you did the motion to put it on the table, I think.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
That was the minutes from March seventeenth, if I'm allowed to read.
Yes, you are allowed to. Allowed to read what happened there.
Okay, first reading of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash. Page nine of the draft minutes for the Monday, March seventeenth meeting. Um, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash nineteen, resolution authorizing the sale of certain real estate. Uh, Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter moved to table, lay it on the table. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash nineteen. It was seconded by Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vote was taken with five aye votes and two were absent. The motion did pass, so everyone here, um, excluding the mayor, had voted to table it. And that's on page ten, top of page ten.
Thank you for the information. Uh, so I, I need a motion, I, I will move to take it off the table.
Yeah, um, motion to br, to bring, uh, R nineteen back to council for consideration.
Whatever he said. Is there a second?
Second.
Who did the second?
None.
None.
Questions? Why did, why did we?
You're not allowed to, you're not allowed to have, uh, any amendments or debate on it until.
I'm sorry.
You're not allowed to have any amendments or debate while the motion is pending.
Oh, I thought they, okay.
So we have a motion, we have a second. This is council rule thirty-eight point one zero eight A. Uh, the second sentence says, no amendments or debate of the subject may be considered. So basically what the rule wants is, once the motion has been made to bring it back before council, vote on it, make a decision on that, and then we'll go into our normal process.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second.
Who did the, the motion piece? Me and?
You did, and Councilwoman Calhoun Mumia seconded. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five votes. That motion does pass.
Okay, what time can this question be asked by Councilwoman Mitchell?
So now it's properly on the agenda and before council, so now it's just like any other piece of legislation.
Do we need to read it first before, uh, asking questions?
Well, once we have the second reading, we can't have any amendments. So if there are questions or debate about it, I would recommend doing that now.
Uh, before we, uh.
Do the second reading.
Okay. Councilwoman Mitchell.
So my question is, why did we lay it on the table? I don't recall.
Additional information, I believe.
This is the one that had to be revised to change the amount of the structure being built, uh, to a garage for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, for the garage.
Okay, anymore, any other questions? Waiting on you to read this.
Motion to suspend the rules.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You gotta read it.
I apologize. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash nineteen. Resolution authorizing the sale of certain real estate, and that real estate is thirteen seventy-two Chamber- Chamberlain Avenue.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules?
So move.
Second.
Been moved by, uh, Councilwoman Laverne and seconded by Councilwoman, uh, Phyllis Baber.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
I move to receive a passage.
Second.
Been moved by Linda, uh, and seconded by Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell, if that's what you're asking. I made the.
I didn't hear, okay.
I made the motion.
I got you. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Five aye votes. That motion does pass.
Okay, uh, motion to, I'm motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Council, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
Yes, uh, uh, Mrs. Deepa.
Thank you. Good evening again, everyone. Uh, just an FYI that as we move to agenda item nine, new business, these are all the transfer resolutions. These are all provided to council in advance of the meeting last week. Um, and so per our rules, there's no need to make a motion to read it by title. Automatically defaults to reading by title unless somebody wants to hear, have it read in its entirety. That's the only motion. Otherwise, the clerk can proceed directly to the, uh, first reading by title.
Of each one of those?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we are.
Air.
New business? Item.
First reading of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash twenty. Resolution authorizing the finance director to transfer monies between program codes formerly known as departments within the CDBG Memorial Field Fund.
Motion to suspend the rules? Well, I move to suspend the rules.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
No.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have four aye votes and one nay. That motion does not pass.
Can I ask for a motion to reconsider?
You talking to me?
Everybody. Just motion to reconsider. So moved. Second. Is it okay to reconsider that, uh?
I think, I think what's really being asked is a council member, um, has a right to change their vote, and I, I think that's really what's being asked. Are you, is that what you're asking, Ms. Heinsten?
Yes.
Do I have a conversation right here? Because I said no, because when we asked what was this money being used for, there was no directive.
Okay. If you had to pay, if you gotta pay the bills, just Latin it over, add in one account to the other. Uh, if you wanna stay where you are, I'm, we'll move on to the next piece of legislation.
When we first talked about this, because there was no, this was the one for the memorial field. And when, am I right or wrong? And when Ms. Mitchell asked why, what was we transferring the money for, there was no understanding.
So, just so we can avoid this in the future, um, and I, I think part of the issue is that, um, and just so the public understands, is that Mr. Williams is wearing two hats. He's, he is the Public Works Director, uh, and he was kind enough to help, uh, the village out by agreeing to assume the interim manager position. Um, but obviously, um, the ideal situation would be two Mr. Williams when we have one Mr. Williams. So I think council is used to the permanent manager being able to say, oh, we're moving it from here to here and here's why we're doing it. Um, so, um, what might make sense, Mr. Williams, is asking Mr. Key to provide more, um, more meat to them, put more meat on them bones, so that when, um, you know, somebody who doesn't work in the finance department is reading this, they would know, oh, that's why we're doing that, and that's the department, that's the line item. Um, they have different names now, what are the object codes or whatever, but under our o- old language, you know, it's going to this department, it's going to this line item, and here's the reason we're doing it. And that, I think, will help council when we come to the meeting. So, just a, just a suggestion.
We can do that.
Okay. Bring it back to the next meeting. Ms. Randolph?
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash twenty-one. Resolution authorizing the finance director to transfer monies between program codes formerly known as departments within the infrastructure levy fund.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Removed by Linda, seconded by Councilwoman, uh, Laverne Mitchell.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I can't hear, I can't hear you. Um, Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
Okay, make a motion to, uh, to receive a passage.
So move.
Okay.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
Need a motion to apply the emergency clause.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Mitchell, you made a motion and seconded by Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
Thank you.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash twenty-two. Resolution authorizing the finance director to transfer monies between program codes formerly known as departments in the general fund.
Motion to suspend the rules? I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
So moved.
Councilwoman Mitchell made the motion and seconded by Councilwoman Calhoun Mumia. Okay. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
Is there a motion to receive for passage?
So move.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
Need a motion to apply the emergency clause.
Motion.
Motion by, uh, Councilwoman Mitchell. Who seconded? Okay, Ms. Councilwoman Baber.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. You made the motion, I'm.
I seconded it.
Yeah, but I'm reading roll call of the vote.
Oh, okay.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. We have five aye votes. That motion does pass. Red, Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash twenty-three. Resolution authorizing the finance director to transfer monies between program codes formerly known as departments in the general fund.
A motion to, I need a motion to suspend the rules?
So move.
Laverne motioned, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
No, see, I don't understand.
I'm sorry.
Look, it looks, it's a different, uh, department. So it's the same fund, but it's going, um, from program seven-ten. It's going from.
Program seven-ten to program four-one-zero. And that, and that's what we used to call departments, the, the programs.
So it says in the, in the section one where, what it is.
Yeah, so fund one thousand, I mean, just based on what was put together by the finance department, I'm presuming is the general fund.
Yes.
And so, all the, all that's being asked to do is transfer five hundred dollars from what we used to call departments. So from department seven-ten to department four-ten, what they're calling programs now. And it's going to be used in the same line item, what are now called object codes, which are three, which is three hundred. I hope that helps. That's, that's what I can interpret from it.
Roll call again.
First suspension of the rules. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Um, yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
Uh, I need a motion to receive a passage.
Motion.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber and Councilwoman Mitchell, second the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, roll call. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. The motion does pass.
Need a motion to, uh, adopt the emergency clause?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Mitchell, I think, second. Um, Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. The motion does pass.
Okay.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash twenty-four. Resolution authorizing the finance director to transfer monies from special revenue fund four-two-zero-three to the general fund.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
So move.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
I move to receive a, a passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
Uh, need a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by, uh, Councilwoman Baber and seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash twenty-five. Resolution authorizing the finance director to transfer monies from a special revenue fund four-two-zero-two to the general fund.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
Need a motion to receive a passage.
Motion.
Second.
It was, uh.
Councilwoman Baber seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Heinsten.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
Okay, I move to adopt the emergency clause. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. We have five i-votes. That motion does pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number 2025-R-26. Resolution authorizing the Finance Director to transfer monies from Special Revenue Fund 2063 to the General Fund.
Motion to suspend the rules? Is there one? Okay, motion by, uh, Councilwoman Baber. Second by who?
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
Is there a motion to receive for passage?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
I move to adopt the emergency clause. Who's second? Thank you.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
Twenty-seven.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number 2025-R-27. Resolution authorizing the Finance Director to transfer monies from the General Fund to Special Revenue Fund 2902.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So move.
Okay, Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to, I need a motion to receive for passage.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Thank you. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
I move to adopt the emergency clause. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five i-votes. That motion does pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number 2025-R-28. Resolution, Resolution authorizing the Finance Director to transfer monies from the General Fund to Special Revenue Fund 2011.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Linda and Laverne.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five i-votes. The motion does pass.
Is there a motion to receive for passage?
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
There are five i-votes. That motion does pass.
I move to adopt the emergency clause. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
Okay, so we've made it through those to move the money. We into the supplemental agenda. Uh, before I start this, do you have anything you want to say, uh, DePauw?
Uh, so this would be different than what we just went through. Uh, these were items that council member just received today. So we will need a motion to read it by title, otherwise it, by default, it will be in its entirety.
For all three?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to read by, uh, Resolution Number 2025-R-29 to read by title or its entirety? Which one do you want?
I motion title only.
Okay, title. Ms. Baber. Is there a second? Second.
No.
Nona, okay.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five i-votes. That motion does pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number 2025-R-29. Resolution authorizing the sale of certain real estate. And that is the address of 1055 Chicago Avenue.
And the amount is? Fourteen thirty?
Yes, one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay. All right, uh, motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
Hey, motion for, I need a motion for passi-, to receive for passage.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
I move to, uh, adopt the emergency clause. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hingston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. Okay, we have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
Ready for next one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, we're looking at Resolution Number 2025-R-3. What is your pleasure?
Thirty.
R-30, right?
Yes, ma'am.
What is your pleasure, counsel?
Read by title only. Motion to read by title only.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Baber, move to read by title only.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
Who did the second on that?
The second was done by Councilwoman Calhoun Mumia.
Okay. Need a motion to suspend the rules? Uh-uh, sorry.
No, ma'am, I have to read.
You gotta read.
Yes.
You've been all night.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number 2025-R-30. Resolution authorizing the sale of certain real estate. And it looks like it's identified by parcel in the amount of seven hundred and twenty dollars. Did you want me to read the parcel listing?
Yeah, you can include in your minutes, yeah.
Okay, parcel number 594-0030-0105-00 on Chicago Avenue.
Um, so why is this parcel selling for seven twenty?
That's the, uh, fair market value assessed by the Hamilton County Auditor. All of the parcels that come before you, the village sells at fair market value based on the most recent assessment by the auditor's appraisers.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and why they assess it at seven twenty, I don't know, but that's what they assess it at.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Second.
The motion by, uh, Baber and second by Mitchell.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to receive for passage, please. Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
I move to adopt the emergency clause to second. Thank you.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
Okay, so we on to Resolution Number 2025-R-31. What is your pleasure, counsel?
Read by title only. Motion to read by title only.
Who's the second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
The motion by Mitchell, who's the second one?
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis- Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to receive for passage. Anyone?
If I, if I'm sorry, if I interrupt, I was reading something for councils, uh, what may come up later in the meeting, and I didn't, uh, wasn't, uh, listening to the reading. Was there a reading done of the resolution?
Oh, you're right, I didn't. No, it was not by title only.
So, uh, the last thing I had recorded is we did have a motion, uh, to read by title only that passed five to zero, correct?
Correct.
All right, so let's, let's go back to do the reading and then we'll come back through and do the next motion.
Okay. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number 2025-R-31. Resolution adopting a policy to hold hearings or meetings by means of video conference or any other similar electronic technology.
Now we can do the motion to suspend, just our normal process.
Uh, motion to suspend.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. Five i-votes, the motion passes.
Need a motion to receive for passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
I move to adopt the emergency clause. Is there a second? Thank you.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Councilwoman Linda Childs Jeter. We have five i-votes. That motion does pass.
Okay. I would like a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment of a public employee or official.
So moved.
I did the motion. You seconded for me?
Oh, second, yeah.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia. Councilwoman Karen Hingston. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. We have five i-votes. That motion does pass. The time is-
And it will be-
Nine thirteen.
Quick, so don't worry. It is nine thirteen. No, we don't need to invite anybody in. All right, let's go. Alright, let's go.
The regular council meeting of Monday, April fourteenth is now back in session. Um, the time is nine forty-six P M. And then I do roll call.
Roll call, please, Ms. Randolph.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Present.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston.
Present.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Present.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
We have five who are present. We do have a quorum.
Okay, uh, need a motion. I want to do the paperwork. Put the paperwork up. Laverne, do you remember the motion?
I can restate it.
You restate the motion, please, because I put it up in here somewhere. Oh, I'm sorry.
You got it?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to hold a special meeting on Wednesday, April the thirtieth at four P M. At Village Hall for, to interview for manager's position. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's second?
I do.
Roll call. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
We have five eye votes. That motion does pass.
Okay, uh, would you please, uh, make sure that we, uh, get that posted, but before you do that, talk to, uh, Mr. Depot.
Okay.
This side. Okay.
Madam Chair, just to, um, I just have a quick question. You made the motion and that was second by whom?
Karen.
Okay.
I mean, uh, Councilwoman Hingston.
Thank you.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Yeah, I was trying to write the motion down. Okay, all right.
You ready?
Yes.
Uh, did we get anything for hearing from the residents?
There was Mr. Gary Brown, um, and I gave you a copy, everyone a copy of what he wanted to speak on, but I see he's not present. He was here, but he left.
Okay, was answered by the ma- the interim manager. Okay, great. Okay, anyone else being none? Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Second. Is that Ms. Baber and Ms.?
Councilwoman Hingston seconded the motion.
Councilwoman Baber and Hingston. All those in favor, oh, I wasn't finished writing. Okay, all, all those in favor to adjourn the meeting say aye.
Aye.
Oh, that aye was strong.
Mm-hmm.
That's as strong as aye you all have had all night.
Mm-hmm.
Be blessed, my, uh, my council members.
I need to pay you, I need to pay you after tonight. That's what the mayor said, he's down here. She said, all of us got to talk, I don't remember. The child said she didn't do it. Well, maybe he gave it to her. Just a few years ago.